TVs are not working.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and get started for our planning commission meeting on April second, two thousand twenty five at six P M. We are going to begin with an invocation or thought from Commissioner Webb, followed by the pledge of allegiance from Commissioner Watson. We'll go to that point. Commissioner Webb, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me? Oh, good. So the thought that I have tonight is it's actually from a fiction book that I was listening to with my wife. And one of the characters is a city planner. But they were quoting a city, the city planner from Bogota, Columbia. And the question I thought was a really interesting question is, are we planning for happiness? And I thought it fit our agenda tonight, but just kind of fit. You know, in general, a thought of, you know, are we thinking about the residents of North Ogden? Are we, are we doing things that help generate happiness? For, you know, all ages, people in our city. So that's my thought.
Thank you.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we will do our roll call. So I'm present Commissioner Green. Commissioner Nancaro is excused tonight. Commissioner Webb is online and present. Commissioner Watson's present. Commissioner Bailey is excused. Commissioner Gardner and neighbor also present. So we will move to our second item, which is consideration and action to approve the March nineteenth, two thousand twenty five Planning Commission Meeting Minutes.
Make a motion to approve minutes. Hold on, March nineteenth, twenty twenty five.
Perfect. So we have a motion and a second. We will move to our ex parte communications or conflicts of interest to disclose. Does anyone have anything tonight?
Do we vote on the minutes?
Oh, do I skip voting on minutes or do we?
We vote on minutes.
That's right. I'm sorry. Skip that. Thank you. Okay. So we'll do a vote on the minutes then all in favor of that motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now we'll move to ex parte communications or conflicts of interest to disclose. And thank you for that. And one, okay, well, okay, that will bring us to item number four, which is public comments for items not on the agenda. Do we have public online? Oh, I don't know if your screens are. None from the kids. Okay. Looks like there is that chat message just a.
It's it was him saying aye.
Okay, perfect. So we will move forward to item number five, which is going to be a public hearing consideration and recommendation regarding a legislative amendment to consider amending the North Ogden Title Code Title eleven and a wide variety of sections and subsections to correct references and clean up the land use code. So we will turn to our presenter Scott Hess, our Community and Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Chair. So we've presented this last two weeks ago as a work session item. The list is substantially similar, but with those larger items pulled out. An example is this code amendment, as recommended right now, doesn't eliminate Century Farm Zone altogether, but that's one that we need to go in and we need to pull out. We've I've worked closely with our city engineer and then our city recorder on the ordinance. Not always does the planning commission get an opportunity to see the draft ordinance, but that's been written mostly just in in the fact that it was really large and I wanted to get ahead of that before presenting to City Council. But in the review time between submitting this to our recorders department for posting and now our city engineer has had a few comments. So I'd like to just address a couple of small things. One is he is going to draw our definition for uphill and downhill lots. He has a copy of that. So that's eleven dash seven definitions. That's on page three of the seventeen page PDF for me. Currently, right now, in the definitions, what isn't identified, the word text is all correct, but where the top back of curb is, as it relates to overall height of the home is not defined on the drawing. And so we just want to show that so that visually it's it aligns with the words and he's happy to help us do that. He just doesn't have time to have that done for the planning commission meeting. And then the other larger item that he has several comments on and we will go through is in the development standards for design and location of parking spaces. This is at the end of page six, beginning of page seven, eleven dash nineteen dash three. And we have several sections of of Title eleven code that have rolled over from year to year that don't align with our public work standards. And this is things like a minimum width of twenty foot, a maximum width, so drive aisles that are a minimum width of twenty feet, a maximum width of twenty five feet, two one-way drive aisles with a minimum width of twelve feet and a maximum width of fifteen feet. Those are all those all disagree with our public work standards. So the two things that we, there's two different directions we can go. And I'd ask the planning commission to make a recommendation to City Council with allowing us to massage this. And you could weigh in on which direction you wanted to go. So one is in Title eleven, eliminate all callouts to widths and just say drive aisles and accessways are to be permitted per public work standard number and then just put it in the public work standards. That works because most of the design engineers have to do that. Or the other thing we can do is we can take the design stand, the public work standards of today and correct these numbers so that they align. The risk being that in the future, if the public work standards are to change, we have to remember to change Title eleven. And I'm I'm really good with both, you know, one or the other. I just want them to either match or reference. And there are certain sections like the Clearview Triangle area, which is at an intersection. We've eliminated the actual numbers in Title eleven altogether and have gone to the public work standards because there's a really clear drawing in there that they can like sub-reference over to. But I don't want to make Title eleven, you know, like devoid of information. So there's a there's a balance there.
So is it? Just being part of this process we work at. It's always good. You don't have to update two items. So the reference to the what guidelines again?
It's the design and access ways. It's basically your parking lot standards.
That seems to be a better route for me, anyway. Reference it rather than duplicating it.
And that's that's really, I I don't disagree. The only thing is that Title eleven is in the land use code, which is regulated by the state municipal land use development management act, L U D M A. And that gives like tonight is a formal public hearing and we have, you know, several members of the public here between our public safety officer, police officer and our members of the public here. But it is a very formalized process for zoning code amendments that once it gets put in the public work standards, those are now required by state law to be adopted by ordinance, but it eliminates the ten day public notice period. It may or may not come with a planning commission recommendation. It may go directly to the legislative body, City Council. So it it kind of eliminates a public transparency portion when you start to like pare down your land use code and put more stuff over in public work standards. But we also have our city attorney here who may be contemplating that same question and thinking of of what the, you know, best way or most transparent way to do it in the public is. And parking lot standards aren't necessarily like a critical item for the public to, you know, weigh in on. And our public work standards are available online just as easy as finding the city code. So.
Don't the public work standards have a public hearing?
They do at City Council because they are adopted by ordinance now, where there were cities that were like administratively staff was changing public work standards and the development community got that changed at the state legislature so that public work standards and really all of our standards that guide development are adopted by ordinance. But so are things like where junk and or like junk and nuisance materials and some streets and snow plowing and removal of snow on sidewalks, like those are all adopted by ordinance. But they're not in the land use code, which is a very specific public hearing process coming through planning commission. So I'm good with I'm good with either. I I agree with with Commissioner Neighbor that not updating two places is better because we will inevitably forget and then the standards begin to walk away from one another.
When we when we design the this particular element in the.
Speaking of the mic.
When they, when the public works designs these standards, I assume they're they're referencing other entities, municipal entities. So when they go through that process, they're not just that there's reference points to make sure that they're solid there too, professional.
Yeah. I would say so. And every city is unique. So North Ogden has a has unique development challenges that Harrisville or Far West or, you know, doesn't have with our hillsides. So some of our public work standards are really unique to us being a hillside community. That's things like road grades and what our turns and our, I mean, ADA requirements, Americans with Disabilities Acts are kind of the same everywhere, but we apply them in very specific ways on the hillside. So yes and no, like they'll reference cities, but they'll reference similar like a draper or a bountiful or another, you know, Alpine, like another hillside community when thinking about their public work standards.
So maybe we are a little bit different that public input is your point on that is maybe unique.
It is.
Because we're a unique community there.
And the hardest part about all of these things is that this is the time the public should be weighing in. I mean, these are pretty innocuous changes that we're making for the most part, but to educate the public on the correct time to come in and make changes to the public process is now. But right now, because there isn't, there aren't orange cones out on the street dictating a new development, it's just very difficult to get the public to come and participate at this point. So I'm with, you know, just think about that in your recommendation for City Council. That's one. And then the other interesting one is we have a thirty six foot width maximum curb cut. And there are several homes up on the hill that have wider than that once they put an RV pad in. But what happens is a curb cut should be maximum thirty six feet and then you can have a little like hump in the curb and you can do another accessory drive. And there's nothing in the code right now that disallows doing two thirty six foot curb cuts next to each other with like a minor hump between the two, which is really wide. And the reason for the limitation on the width of a curb cut is stormwater protection and management. So you don't end up with like wide spots in the stream as water runs down the curb. And the suggestion is to match the commercial standard of if they're like a single curb approach can be no wider than fifty feet. So that would be like the thirty six foot for the residential and then they're given another fourteen feet that they could do for an accessory drive if necessary. But max be fifty foot total of like curb cut available for any one residential home is not referenced currently in any standard in our public works or in this one in our Title eleven. So that's a recommendation from Public Works that they would be making to council. And I'd like you to, you know, think about that one as well.
Which what's the number on that one?
It's the same. It's actually in eleven nineteen three six, but it's not in six access. It's actually further down.
Okay.
So Eric Casperson, our city engineer, was kind of like auditing sections of the code. So that's one we'll probably have to bring back to you. But think about what your recommendation on total width would be.
So the the fifty foot total maximum. That's based on their frontage. What about a corner lot?
Yeah, that's a great question. Because a a good example of a, there are businesses that are corner lots that want to maximize their two drive approaches and they might have the frontage to do it. But residential corner lots are problematic for that reason. Okay. Going down here, the next, this is, this is a bit of a substantive change, but we wanted to keep it in and use this process to make the changes. Eleven twenty dash two general requirements for commercial downtown and commercial south town. We have been applying ten percent, a ten percent standard to all site plan applications in commercial, but we still do have and a reference that says twenty percent in commercial for landscaping. And that's an old suburban standard. We haven't applied the twenty percent for a decade or more, I'd say. I mean, almost all modern, like Walgreens, Maverick, the Kroger, when Smith's rebuilt, all of that was all based around ten percent landscape. So that's what the city as you know it right now is has been based on. So we want to use this public, you know, vehicle to change that, but that is one substantive change in the code would be eliminating the twenty percent and
Go with ten.
Down, you know, down zone requiring it to only ten percent.
And I would imagine that helps just water conservation too, when you do that.
Yep, absolutely. And then on page, I've got it. Page eight of seventeen, the public uses. We did change this so that there's no city council involvement at all. The Parks and Recreation Department are asked to make recommendations for dedicated parks during technical review committee meeting prior to the planning commission reviewing a subdivision plat. And then we we eliminate anything, any reference to City Council. We do not have on the last page of this piece, page eight of seventeen, we don't have a sensitive lands ordinance, so we just reference the sensitive lands features in eleven twenty two, three. And this is one of those circular references that should we adopt a sensitive lands ordinance, we're going to have to remember to go back through sections of code and re-reference it. But that that'll be its own whole effort. And then the rest of the PDF is all the actual ordinance itself, which would be the adopting ordinance to change that code language. And yep, good.
On that public use section.
Yeah.
Where it talks about the the parks having prior approval by the city council. If the planning commission or city staff approves the subdivisions that have park property in it, well, how do we wrap the city council's prior approval into there?
It typically happens with a development agreement. So in the most recent example would be West State's annexation, or let's use one that that's completely done all the way. So Century Farms, multi-family townhomes, had a development agreement that authorized the city to utilize their detention basin for park and then requested a hundred thousand dollars to complete the the remaining area of it, which will have that waterworks equipment in it. So that was the city council weighing in and accepting public improvements as a as a park or as an open space prior to planning commission reviewing the administrative subdivision plat and site plan. So it would typically happen through a development agreement.
Would you ever envision a subdivision coming in with a park property that doesn't have a development agreement?
I doubt it because we're they're not an obligation through our standard subdivision code. So if a piece of land is already zoned R one ten, then the developer will maximize whatever number of rooftops they can get under the current zoning ordinance. But if it's an annexation or a rezone, one of those legislative processes that negotiates with the city council, that would be at the time that the council would say, you know, you know, you shall dedicate point eight acres or one acre to park space. And that all happens like legislative decision to bring the property in under that zoning with a development agreement happens. And then it goes to planning commission for all of the administrative reviews of subdivision and and site plans. So does that seem, I don't know why else the city council would weigh in on it, but does it seem reasonable the way that it's present? And that one, if you look down in the ordinance, I've actually, I can put it back in the ordinance, but that's one I have pulled out between the technical doc and the actual ordinance itself because I still had questions on how that works. So we may need to bring, we can either bring that back or the planning commission can accept that one eleven twenty six, twelve, as it is rewritten right now, which does still say all land to be reserved for dedication to the city for park purposes shall have approval of the city council, shall be shown and marked on plats reserved for park and or recreation purposes. In which case, if it's if a piece of land is negotiated to be given to the city as a park, it would have to be like accepted by city council first and then come back to you, but they wouldn't weigh in on the overall subdivision. And it's kind of a weird.
But it it makes sense, right? Because the purpose of this, if I'm not mistaken, is it is a nice when the city picks up parks, but it's also incredibly impactful, right? Because we're agreeing, we want this property, we want to maintain it, we want to pay for it, et cetera. So it seems like this makes the the intention here is that the city council needs to agree that we want to take upon this obligation of the park, right? Prior to it moving forward, that would be my thinking, but. So it seems to make sense.
Also do the same on public easements or streets.
Yeah, I mean, you 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 accept streets, which are every bit as much of an obligation.
True, true.
If you're willing to keep it how it is, Ryan, would you just note that eleven twenty six, twelve needs to be added to the ordinance and that way.
And it's also a little unique in that the council kind of formally accepts it when they put it into the warranty. That's kind of when we accept the improvements in the ground, but it's there's we've we've had this discussion, this staff, just this nuance of because there are some cities that every subdivision went to the council and that's the reason they'd say, oh, well, we can't approve it because this is how we formally accept the ground. And I think that we've taken a different approach, saying that basically the planning commission tentatively accepts it until the improvements are completed and then the council formally accepts it.
That is, that's essentially all I have on this item with thirty five items or.
I I have one comment, Scott.
Yeah.
If we choose to leave the numbers in here on nineteen dash three access.
Eleven nineteen three. Okay, yep.
The closer than ten feet from any property line is in conflict with the current public work standard.
It is. Yep. And that's that's another one that Eric wants to massage back to match the public work standards because right now it's five feet. So the drive access can be in from the public, well, everything in the public right of way, the drive access is no closer than five feet to a property line. Getting a little bit of room on each property owner's property for utility boxes, water meters. There's a bunch of stuff that happens in that five foot. And Commissioner Gardner, you're absolutely right. Like, that's a, that's a great find in the disagreement between the two. And then the other one is twenty feet from a street intersection or other access driveway. And the example in real life right now that you can drive past is America First's exit from their like drive through and Walgreens entrance on Washington Boulevard are currently not, they're less than twenty feet apart. The new site plan has that slightly moved north, so there will be twenty feet between the two. But the question for all of us to to have is, is that a reasonable standard or should we allow property line driveways? And one that exists is Bank of America and Zion's Bank have a shared driveway. So there's one, you know, one drive approach off of Washington Boulevard that crosses both property lines via access agreement. And that was the right call instead of having them each have their own individual driveway. So there are circumstances where you want a drive approach to go all the way to property line, but each one is individually assessed based on where the utility boxes end up.
I was also wondering that other access driveway, if it should be clarified with whether it's onsite or offsite.
True.
Because it just says.
Oh, that's true. That could be, you know, twenty foot could mean only onsite driveways. So you have no, you know, not dual driveways on a single properties frontage that are closer than twenty feet to each other.
Yeah, but.
But then that would make all accessory driveways at a home for a home need to be at least twenty feet apart, which may or may not be the case for somebody's house.
Just wondering if any clarification language there could help it.
A letter. We could explain. Nineteen three. Let me see how, what's in the.
And that's eleven nineteen three still.
Yeah, eleven nineteen three is in is in the current ordinance, but that's one we can pull out and debate with some of the other substantive changes. We'll be, we will be doing this for the next several meetings. So there'll be other opportunities. If if you're uncomfortable with moving eleven nineteen three forward now, I can, we can have a note where we pull that out of the ordinance moving to City Council. Will you make that note too, Ryan? Thank you.
Can I just do a process check? Because I'm new. We're going over a lot of stuff here.
Yeah, sorry.
So everything in red is proposed to be changed.
Correct.
What is the, what are the items in that that tan color?
Those were our like concerns. They were things that we wanted to raise as question marks to the planning commission for your consideration.
Okay.
And then the blue, the items in blue were like, these are bigger issues altogether. We need to pull these out and they will be their own publicly noticed items. So and the way the ordinance, the way our ordinance format is written in North Ogden is a strikeout is text in the current code you're eliminating and red text is being put in place. So you just you write it like a a track changes document that way.
I didn't, I wasn't quite getting.
Yeah, the the working document is a little bit difficult to understand because there are a ton of notes in it at this point and we've continued to update that as a shared doc, but it's it's just us more having an understanding of what, when we want to have a larger conversation with the planning commission.
I'm not being critical. I was just trying to be.
Any other questions for Scott at this point? And Scott, I'm sorry, you was that, I think you said it was the end. Is that?
That's all good.
Okay. And if we have no direct questions for Scott, then we would move into opening the public hearing. Are you guys comfortable with doing that at this point? Okay, so we will formally open the public hearing.
Oh, we do have a hand that got raised.
Looks like Councilman Pulver has his hand up. Go ahead, sir.
Hey, so I had sent Scott a bunch of eleven, chapter eleven corrections. I don't know if, I mean, it was last October. I didn't, I kind of, I did a quick check. I didn't really do a comprehensive. Was there any of those things that got in there for this time around?
I I probably read that email and it was around my concussion, so I honestly will tell you right now, I don't know.
Okay, I can forward it back to you if that works.
Well, I will, I'll find it and or if you want to forward it and Ryan and I can scrub your found changes against our working doc of the last eighteen months of found changes and we'll make, we will, we will make sure that anything that was forgotten gets publicly noticed and run through this process. So yeah, thank you very much for reminding me about that.
Yeah, and I I I should have said that earlier, but it's one of those things that gets, like you said, gets lost and if you don't do it right that second, it's not going to happen. Anyway, all right, I will do that. Thanks.
Thank you. If we have no other raised hands or public comments, I would entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that closes the public hearing, which would mean we can now have discussion on this item. I like your thoughts about that eleven nineteen three, and it sounds like Scott was recommending we could maybe pull that out and look at that a little bit closer. I think that was really great. Everything in red seems acceptable. Does anyone feel differently about that?
I do like the idea that Commissioner Neighbor brought up about.
Will you speak into the microphone?
About referencing the public work standard as much as possible, so we don't duplicate or have to go through this again, I guess.
Was that, Scott, was your comment just to, was that in relation just to this parking lot issue or was your suggestion to do that throughout or to limit it to a specific section?
For right now, I would do the eleven nineteen section, which is parking, loading and access. I think that's probably one of the best places to reference the the standards because our city engineer reviews against his public work standards and then makes the comments on our site plan applications based on that. And we allow engineering to kind of to really guide that engineering in the fire department. So that's a great section where I don't, I don't cross reference the code and then tell our city engineer that they're wrong because our number says fifteen feet and there says fourteen or whatever. So.
Thank you. So it sounds like with what's proposed here, two changes we're talking about is potentially that eleven in the section eleven nineteen, the parking loading, we would remove numbers and reference the public work standards and then making eleven nineteen three a section that we look at a little closer later. And then everything else proposed here, any other concerns or thoughts?
Good to me.
I think you just said it.
Oh, yes. Oh yes. Good point. Um, Commissioner Webb, did you have anything to add on this item? Thank you.
I don't think he's there anymore, is he?
I'm not sure.
I didn't see him on the list. Is.
Oh, yeah.
He's, he's iPhone two and he's a.
Okay, sorry.
He's been moved to.
As I am here.
Yeah, sorry, Commissioner Webb.
Okay, no additions. Okay. So, um, I guess, um, I move that we recommend to city council that the changes to the North Ogden code title eleven that are seen here in this document be adapted with the exception of having the eleven nineteen dash three section excluded from the adaptation of these. And then in the section eleven nineteen parking, loading and slash access, we eliminate the numbers and reference back to the public work standards as our recommendation.
I will second that.
Okay. Um, any further discussion? All right. So let's see, Commissioner Webb, how do you vote?
Says yes.
That didn't last. Commissioner Watson?
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner Gardner?
Yes.
Commissioner Neighbors?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Okay, that concludes this item and moves us to number six, which is state required planning commission training. I'm assuming from Ryan, Nun and Scott.
So I'll just kick this off by saying that we, we have been thinking about this and putting it together and we wanted to do a housing related training. So what we've found is we've got three linked videos from Planetizen, which is a like citizen planning group. It's like a third party. It's not part of American Planning Association, but it's a well-referenced, uh, planning forum essentially, if you're interested at all. And we will look, we'll watch three short videos there. I think the longest one's twelve minutes. The others are five. We can have a discussion about it. And then we have a link that's, um, to five or, uh, five practical zoning hacks for missing middle housing that is an article. And we'll go through that. And my intention here is the state required training is an hour. If we spend less time than an hour total talking about it, I'm sure you'll all go home and you'll be thinking about these things for the next two weeks before the next planning commission meeting. So the benefit is greater in my opinion than the, the true fact that we've spent an hour here. So we don't, I mean, we will count this, it will totally work. Your time here, you've already been here thirty five minutes, uh, working on some of these issues. But we're going to be looking at some videos and the three videos are what is missing middle housing? So it's just generally, you know, what are we talking about? Two is an introduction to form-based codes for neighborhoods. So that gets us out of thinking about what the actual use of the box is and more about how the box looks on the ground. So that could be a duplex or a triplex, but it might form of like look of in the form of a single family house if we had a well-written form-based code. And then the last is what is an impact fee dollars and cents done by the Utah League of Cities and Towns? And they're all related in my opinion, because we, we have a lot of the same type of single family housing and now we're getting a lot of very similar types of apartments and townhomes, but we don't have that mix. The second is how could we do it from a policy standpoint, which may be consideration of a form-based code? And the third is what are the impacts to residents in doing different housing types? And impact fees are a real cost that we have to consider, but they also pay for, you know, roads, pipes, infrastructure that we maintain forever. So with that, I think John, if you want to start the first video and if the, if the one gets a little long, we might forward through it. But my encouragement would be to think about questions and we can have a little, like a brief discussion in between each, and then we'll move through the training.
Now you just want it to actually have volume.
That would be great.
You would on what looks like Commissioner, one of the best commissioners.
Think I've got.
And this is on here. This is one more planner who has no hair, which I think is, I think it's required. So watch yourself, Ryan, but I really feel like it's a requirement of the job.
Sending it out that way.
Technology self.
Isn't it though?
Right.
Let's see. See if it'll work outside of teams.
So in this chapter, I'm going to give you an overview of what missing middle housing is. And then just show you some photographic examples of different cities and smaller towns from all across the country that has a range of these missing middle housing types. So what is missing middle housing? Um, this is a diagram that we created several years ago that has really, uh, uh, sort of, I think, promoted the concept and enabled the concept to really catch on very rapidly in communities across the country. On, on your left-hand side of this diagram, in white are the single-family detached housing types. On your right-hand side of this diagram are the larger four or five-story plus-story next to you buildings or larger apartment buildings. And right, we've done a really great job of planning and zoning for a single family. We know how to build a lot of those. And on the other side, in the past five to 10 years in particular, uh, we really thought about how to plan for and, and figure out how to build those larger urban projects. There's all of these housing types in between that we call the missing middle. It's duplexes, it's fourplexes, it's bungalows, it's mid-work buildings. And what's important about the concept of the missing middle is even though these buildings have multiple units in the building, they never get larger than the scale of the house. It's a really, really important concept. And if you take one concept away from this webinar, that is probably the most important one. And so why do we call them missing, right? We call them missing because there are a lot of barriers currently in place uh, for missing middle housing to get built. We really haven't seen a lot of these housing types built in the last thirty, forty, fifty years. And the majority of them, the existing examples were built in pre nineteen forties neighborhoods. And so they're missing because there's a lot of zoning barriers in place that I just mentioned earlier. Uh, they're missing because it's really hard or it's much harder to finance a building with more than four units in it. Um, it's missing because, you know, our industries, the, the building industries and the development industries are not set up to focus on this type of housing. So some of it's being built, but it's not being built sort of at a production scale. It's being built by smaller sort of local or medium-scale builders. And so there's very little of it being built. And so, right, you see examples of these missing middle types in places in big cities like Denver, Colorado, right? You see this great collection of beautiful historic missing middle types. Um, you see them in the medium-sized cities, the Santa Barbara, California, right? It's got some of the, the most vast collection of these missing middle types of any community that I've been in, worked in across the country. It's courtyard apartment, uh, bungalow court on the upper right-hand side, a multiplex small, another example of a courtyard apartment in the lower left-hand side. So, um, and then smaller communities, right? Even places like Norman, Oklahoma have really great examples of these missing middle housing types. And, and they're typically sprinkled throughout the downtown adjacent neighborhoods. Um, right. And it's geographically diverse, the locations and the places these exist, even in places like Omaha and Nebraska in the Midwest, right? Great, uh, collection of missing middle housing types. Um, in places like Detroit, Michigan, we're seeing that missing middle housing types, uh, just a really, really great collection and, and really beautifully uh, sort of historic examples in Detroit. They're playing a really critical role in places like Detroit in the revitalization of the downtown adjacent neighborhood neighborhoods. And so I'd like to sort of conclude that sort of, uh, group of examples using New Orleans, uh, New Orleans, Louisiana, right? Has a very similar, we call the palette or the, the collection of missing middle housing types. But what's great about these missing middle types is even though that back group or that palette is similar in different cities or towns is they have adapted and adopted sort of, uh, differences based on local culture and local climate. And, and New Orleans kind of reinforces that, uh, to the most, uh, sort of to the largest extent in the, in the upper right-hand side, um, your upper right-hand side. The, there's the side-by-side duplex, which in, in the New Orleans example is actually two shopbed houses that are put together. And if you don't know what a shopbed house is, it's actually sort of a very narrow, very deep unit type that's very typical in, in the southeast and hot humid areas where you can actually open the front door. You can open the back door and it allows for really great cross ventilation and actually cool the buildings. The other thing that's really neat about the duplexes, it's adapted to New Orleans and it has a really deep overhang. So that it prevents rain from coming in the windows. You can still have the windows down for that cross ventilation. And it also passively shades the house so that it keeps it cooler in the hot summer weather. And so just like to show that as an example of ways that the missing middle types are similar, but have adapted to different communities across the country. So that concludes this introduction and definition of missing middle chapter. And so in the next chapter, what I'm going to do is I'm going to walk through a series of photographic examples of, or the full range of missing middle types and explain to you the characteristics of those types.
So planning commission, I'd ask, you know, can you, can you think of or identify any middle housing options in North Ogden right now? I, I can think of a few, but I'm interested, you know, for you, what, what you consider or look at in the current built environment in North Ogden, that would be that middle housing.
On twenty six hundred, there's a home that has two, two homes side by side on the north side. You know what one I'm talking about there? Is that a middle?
That would be a great.
That would be an example of that.
Yeah. Anyone else?
Yeah.
So I think about the residential city center zone. So it's almost all of our old part of town. So everything north of twenty six, well, between twenty six hundred and twenty eight fifty, uh, between essentially Washington Boulevard and about seventh east or so, that older area of town has brand new houses, has things that were built in early nineteen hundreds, a bunch of nineteen seventies era housing. Several actual true duplexes that are two-family dwellings, some apartments. That, that area of town to me represents one of the most complete neighborhoods that North Ogden has. And then as you march up the hill a little further, um, Lakewood is kind of an interesting subdivision that was developed between the late, you know, seventies and eighties that has two family dwellings in it and that you don't even notice. They almost just look like large houses or double garage door houses, but there are several duplexes there. And duplexes or twin homes were pulled out of our city code ten years ago or more, ten, twelve years ago. And they've kind of gotten a bad rap of being something that was less desirable or they weren't maintained. And at this point, housing values are so expensive that almost everything is maintained at a pretty high level unless it's an abandoned structure. So I'm less concerned about reinstituting like duplexes in even several of or multiple single-family zones. Uh, but that would, that would be a sea change to what we have right now. We've got this huge swath of homes in the R one ten district that have been developed and are all very similar. So thinking as developers come in, what can we do as, as a planning commission to recommend? Or what could we do on a policy standpoint through codes to recommend something that's a little different? Like the cottage courtyards or twin homes, small town homes, conversions of homes to multifamily exceeding like one home that, and an ADU.
I think that, that whole idea would reinforce affordability, right? And sustainability. Uh, I, I would think those are two major issues that we, that are surrounding us right now.
Sure.
So a change, I, I think you're saying could help us with that a little bit.
Yeah, for sure. I mean, most of the people we see that have built or purchased a home with an internal accessory dwelling unit do it as a financing mechanism so that they can afford the house.
Yeah.
They rent out the basement so that they can afford the mortgage rate or the mortgage at current interest rates. Some of that stuff is completely out of our hands. We don't control interest rates and financing options or construction costs. No city does. But we can provide tools that kind of lower the bar to homeownership if that's possible for folks.
Does the element, how does the, when I saw that home, I thought, how does the financing work on that?
Yeah, it's a great question. I, I, some, in some cases you can condominiumize.
Yeah, yeah, probably.
You end up with two homes.
Yeah.
Um, Farmington City is doing some really unique things with external accessory dwelling units where they're allowing people to sell off the back portion of their lot with a home on it and actually physically sell it. It's gone. It's their ownership. And they just get a perpetual access easement. So they're creating dozens of or more like mini flag lot homes. And that came from the city council who realized that their kids couldn't afford to live in Farmington anymore. So they were willing to allow them to build like a rear yard ADU. And it was a, how do we as a city create more housing and density that just sort of densifies in neighborhoods? Because the, they, the amount of hidden density that's out in our single-family neighborhoods right now with doubled up families. You just think about, you move those people out of the basement into a little home in the backyard, but it doesn't change the overall number of people who are living in any one neighborhood, right? So we may, we may consider those options. And one thing I'd like the planning commission to think about is our external accessory dwelling unit code right now requires a twenty thousand square foot lot or larger, which is essentially half acre. We have plenty of half acre lots. It hasn't really been a problem, but the majority of our lots in the city, I would say are more like fourteen thousand and few, and less. So should we be considering small accessory dwelling units that are detached in backyards on lots smaller than twenty thousand square feet and what that number should be? And I think it was about, uh, Dave Peterson, the farming, the planning director for Farmington City. It was almost twenty years ago, they eliminated the lot size requirement at all for external, um, accessory dwelling units. And it's been largely self-regulated by people. I mean, it's like the same standard as being able to put a large shed in your backyard and they align. And he said it, it hasn't been abused and it wasn't like they had dozens or hundreds of applications come in. They just trickle in just like they do right now.
So if they have just a access easement.
Yeah.
What do they deal with parking and?
Right. It's, it would be a, yeah, it's really, this Farmington ordinance is really interesting and I'll pull it and we could review it if the planning commission is interested in that. The last time I talked to, uh, Dave Peterson was the end of last year. And he and Lyle Gibson, who are the planning department over in Farmington, were finalizing that code through city council. So it wasn't adopted yet. And I would expect there might be a, a presentation in Logan on that. And if not, I'll ask Dave while we're up at the, um, the Utah APA conference, if I can get a copy of that ordinance. Really, it's very interesting to me. Like we, I mean, again, we took out, we eliminated flag lots from our ordinance. So right now every lot has to have its own frontage and we don't have a flag lot ordinance at all, which has hampered development in some cases of folks who have a large enough lot to, like they have an acre and they want to do a flag lot and sell off half an acre in the backyard and they can't because they don't have enough frontage width, um, to do it. So flag lots is another thing that aren't like good, bad or indifferent. Really, it's just a matter of what the city wants their city to look like.
In, in the training, the video where it showed bungalows.
Yeah.
And, uh, courtyards. You know, they didn't seem to provide any parking that we could see.
Yeah, that's a good question. I know.
But they have multiple houses, units in there.
And some of those neighborhoods are more walkable.
Yeah.
You've got areas of Portland, for instance, gets turned around. And I know everyone hates to be compared to Portland. Um, but they have some really walkable neighborhoods and like neighborhood scale commercial where people can live and go to church and do their shopping and everything and really limit their car use. And that's, that isn't practically North Ogden. We really, we have to retain our ability to drive and have parking. So that's something to be thinking about in especially external ADUs.
But there's, there's paths in our city where mass transit is, is more available too. And, and I don't think we, we really don't. I mean, the universe, I don't know if you've been about the university lately, but we've done that, uh, rapid bus transit system. And when that transit system was going in front of my window at the university, I thought somebody is going to get blown over by that. But I, I see the benefits of that. It's probably a generation or two away before it fully gets the, uh, embraced. But the whole idea of utilizing mass transit, where I don't think the Western, the Western attitude has not really embraced that very well. But providing these kind of homes in a, in a, in a mass transit avenue would probably be a good idea too, I would imagine.
And Ogden to Provost connected really well with commuter rail and then areas of Salt Lake are connected with the S-line streetcar system and other buses of a line. But we are, we're like suburban fringe. I mean, we're just far enough away that even Wasatch Regional Council, our regional transportation planning organization, we might get fifteen-minute bus service on Washington Boulevard someday. But right now it's very, very limited and they, they're canceling the upper loop. But right now it's very, very limited and they, they're canceling the upper loop.
Oh, are they really?
Yeah, they're, when does that?
Um, it happens either next year or the year after, but they're doing their Uber service.
Yeah.
So on demand.
Really?
Bus service.
Which they started in southwest Salt Lake County, like Harriman Riverton, Bluff, Bluffdale area. And it was very successful. So it's, it's UTA, it's like two dollars and fifty cents and they'll come and pick you up and drop you off at a major transit station. So they'll institute that here, far like probably where we're at Harrisville Pleasant View Far West and.
So it's just more feasible for them, but still provide the service.
I think so because the number of trips were so few that it makes more sense financially to run someone out to pick one person up and to just run a bus all day long in the loop.
Interesting.
Commissioner Webb, we saw your comments displayed up here. So thank you for that.
Okay, wonderful. Well, if we want to, John, if we can start the second video, I think the second one, introduction to form based code might be a little bit longer. So we can watch the first few minutes and then see if that's keeping folks interested. And if it's not, then we can jump. But form based code, just while John pulls this up is really the focus on what the box on the ground looks like, not the use. So some form based codes could say, you could have a little neighborhood. You know, I like, I have a home based business that's a bike shop. Like you could have a little bike shop embedded in a neighborhood if it looked like every other box, right? Or you could have people have tons of uses. You know, you've got salons and other home based businesses. So it would really be focused on, is this, does this fit in with the character of the neighborhood from the way it looks standpoint and not the use. And that would include duplexes, triplexes, apartments, any number of things and could kind of blend seamlessly into a neighborhood if it's done correctly. So.
So this training is just basically to open our eyes to different ideas. That's what it is.
Yep.
Okay. You guys are used to that.
Okay, let's see if I can make it work.
All right, I love it. John's, all right, John's IT today. Get it. Good work.
Mostly.
In this chapter, I'm going to talk about the mixed housing types and building forms within a form based code in a more urban neighborhood. The great aspects of using form based coding is that it promotes a really diverse range of housing choices. And this becomes more and more important as the demand for living in walkover urban neighborhoods grows in cities, towns and smaller communities all across the country. So when we think about this range of housing types in a form based approach, we don't start with the thought of thinking about these in terms of densities, but rather thinking about them in terms of intended incompatible form and scale. And, or, or oftentimes thinking about them in terms of a range of building types that might be allowed within different neighborhoods. And so this, this slide is a really interesting diagram that on your left hand side illustrates a single family home. On the right hand side represents kind of the multi-story base use building. And there's this full spectrum of housing types in the middle that we often call missing middle housing types. And the form based coding is a really effective tool at regulating that broad range of housing choices. But we found it in particular, a really great tool to kind of get communities to be able to provide this range of missing middle types that you see in the middle of that diagram. It's the duplexes, it's the small bungalow courts, it's the small mansion apartments that really have existed in pre nineteen forties neighborhoods and really help become a really important key providing those choices throughout a walkable neighborhood. So these diagrams are actually somewhat similar to what Jeff had shown me when he was talking about the block. But I wanted to have a slightly different focus and, and these are simply representing the ways that there were housing types and the choices can be provided on a block. Just initial thoughts on, on regulating those. So in this particular instance, the end grain of the block on your, on your right hand side has a, a nice range of the sort of medium footprint, these missing middle types that I just mentioned, you have a six, six unit, new six unit, multi-plex, the mansion apartment building. And as you turn the corner into the neighborhood, the neighborhood becomes primarily single family, maybe with some nice ancillary units or carriage houses in the back. So that's a really nice way to mix housing types within an individual block in a walkable neighborhood. The second example is when, it's what we call blended density. And it's really where on the entire block, you have a really broad range of, of, of housing types, running single family homes, courtyard apartments, bungalow courts. But they're at a compatible scale and size that you could really walk or even ride your bike down the street and not even notice that one of these buildings had multiple units in it unless you actually stopped to look very carefully at it. And so it's a really important concept in, in our sort of urban design and planning practices. And this ties in directly into our form based code framework. So how do you regulate a zone? Or, or create a zone and regulate a neighborhood or a block such that you can provide and incentivize this range of housing types to encourage in that, in that block. And this third example, it's, it's a similar to that first one, but it has, you're looking at what Jeff had mentioned as one of the more primary corridors. It may have sort of the, the planning intent is for a higher intensity residential use and maybe get to four, you know, three, four or five stories of residential. As you turn your corner into that neighborhood, this is where we've seen some really great examples of that's where those missing middle types of the two story duplex, the fourplex. On the first couple of blocks, transitions in scale from that larger residential corridor down into what then becomes primarily a single family neighborhood. And so just thinking about that, of that is a really important concept when you're, when you're thinking about planning for a neighborhood and writing a form based code for a neighborhood. And in terms of the last example here, and then Jeff showed this as well, is you know, it's, it's just the example where you have the main street, the neighborhood main street environment along one edge of the block typically sort of turn on what we call the end grain. And then as you turn that corner off of the main street and into the neighborhood, you know, similar to the higher intensity residential, you're just example, you have a couple of blocks, two, three blocks where those missing little housing types, that duplex, fourplex, courtyard apartment serves, serves as a really nice transition from that more active and more vibrant mixed use corridor into the neighborhood. And so those were just some really quick examples of ways that you should be thinking about the neighborhood, the structure of the blocks and the mix of housing within those blocks to provide a diverse range of housing in your planning and form based coding efforts. And so to conclude, I think this is a really important concept that actually Tony Perez came up with is that when you're thinking about housing and form based coding, that the input into the process needs to be form or the desired urban form. And then the output is the density, as opposed to the conventional coding and planning where it's the density is the input and you might come up with a form that's very compatible with, with the area or the community. I think with a really, really important basic starting point for this conversation and work within the form based coding at the neighborhood scale. And so that's in chapter six, I'm going to talk about planning considerations related to the neighborhood and form based coding. In the next chapter, chapter six, I'll be talking about planning considerations in reference to.
So that, it, it was, I mean, similar to the first video, it had some of the overlaps, but just talked a little bit more about that idea that form rather than density. Like right now, we think in terms of zoning density. R one ten is ten thousand square foot lots, a square acre is forty three, five sixty. So that's essentially quarter acre. We have R twelve and a half, you have R one eight. So you think in terms of a fifth of an acre, a quarter acre, a third of an acre, and then we divvy up the city that way. I think this would actually be a good time, John, to maybe open that article. And then the last thing we'll end with is just a two minute video on impact fees. This article is on five practical zoning hacks for missing middle housing. And we can skip the kind of intro part and go down to the five because for North Ogden, a couple of these would be difficult to prioritize or put into place. But number one is reducing minimum lot size. So we have a few sections of our air, of our city that have five to six thousand square foot lots and they were typically planned ahead of time as complete neighborhoods that are like fifty five and older communities or designed specifically with homeowners associations or other restrictions. So the houses all end up very similar and homogeneous, which isn't necessarily, again, a bad thing. But isn't just opening up any large swaths of our city to smaller lot development. So this, there, they state that if it, if a developer is required to pull together aggregate parcels in order to build a small multi-unit building, then maybe your lot sizes are too large. And even in North Ogden, if the, in the residential city center zone, by eliminating duplexes and retaining our minimum lot widths that we have, you really can't build multifamily at all anywhere in any single family zone today outside of a home with an internal ADU. But you can't sell it or finance it separately as two, two properties. This says, replace your minimum lot sizes with minimum lot widths and then tie types of buildings to the lot widths, not the square footage. So you'd have, if you want a larger building, you need more frontage and smaller building, less frontage. So the lot frontage kind of matches the size of, size and scale of the home, which is an interesting thought instead of just one lot width. So whether you want a four thousand square foot house or a twenty five hundred square foot house, we don't care. Your lot front is going to be a hundred feet in R one ten. That's just.
So this is that format based idea in that previous.
And what would the zone be then?
We would create it. We would have to create a zone. Or you could create, within zones, you could create exceptions to the standards based on form. So like, you could have a form based code that says you can build an R one ten and you're permitted to, and you can use these standards over here. And if you hit these performance standards, then you get that kind of density increase or change. So there's a few different ways to do it.
Is there a city with form based codes that you could point to as an example? Like, is that like here in Utah?
Yeah. So this isn't at a small scale, but Salt Lake City did the fourth south corridor. So if you're familiar with this, it's where tracks runs up to the University of Utah. And originally it had a lot of single story, old buildings and small scale stuff and kind of like failing commercial enterprises along it. And Salt Lake City changed to a fast track development process, which in Salt Lake City meant a ton. Like it can take a year to get a project through their just standard administrative process, let alone if you're going to go legislate and deal with the city council. So they put together a form based code and they said, if you bring us buildings that are of this size, of these setbacks, with these parking requirements and generally these materials and meet this form, then your development process will be cut, you know, to a third of the time. Like you will be automatically reviewed and approved and moved forward. And that was based on form based code. And that's how all of those, they're called stump buildings. Like that's become a term across the nation, but the, the five to six story buildings that have become everywhere in urban environments. And the reason they are is because you podium park with concrete, the first story, and then everything else can be wood construction. And once you exceed five stories, I think it's, I think five stories is the limit where you have to go steel construction. And then at that point, it's like, if you're going to build a six story building, you might as well build a ten and you, it's just whatever you can find it. So that's why the, the, you know, four to five story on top of a podium parked building is literally everywhere. Like they've kind of taken over. But that's one example of form based code that you can go and look at today and see how rapidly, like within the course of ten years, the fourth south corridor has.
You can see that actually. Yeah. They just made it easier.
Yep.
Interesting.
Uh, number two in this article, allow for more housing types and revisit the structure sizes. So the, again, it's Portland city. So take that with a grain of salt if you don't want to be compared to Portland. But the, the planning director there said, if the house size is the same, why do you care how many units are in there? And this, that's kind of an interesting question. If it's five thousand square feet, do you really care if there's two or three separate kitchens in it and bathroom areas and living areas?
A little bit.
So in, in Portland, their single family zones, they're permitted to build up to four units divided between a main building and a detached accessory dwelling unit. Five or six units are allowed if half of them are affordable to low income residents. So if you hit income requirements, you can even get more units. And we're starting to see in areas of Portland, small lot development, five, six thousand square foot, where you've got a home with an ADU plus a garage and a garage apartment above. So they're really densifying in place in a way that we probably don't have to. But if you think about it, if we're going to hit forty thousand people, we can do it in some ways in place and preserve some open space instead of just developing everything as one fabric of single family homes everywhere. The third one, oh yeah, go ahead.
Would it be safe to say that the, the earlier? If, if we, if we like the idea of form based code here in North Ogden, which I personally do, the earlier we adopt some of those standards, the more flexibility it gives the city to, you know, create standards that it can work out in a way that works for North Ogden, you know? Not necessarily Portland, not, I mean, there's elements of Paris, there's elements of Barcelona. You know, there's also, you know, bad examples of projects out there that were form based code, but like, like the earlier we can do this, the higher we might be able to keep the standards with the flexible land we have. Or is that, is that an unfair statement to make that?
No, I think, I think that's very accurate. And we generally, and I don't want to speak for every planning director before me and planning decisions before me, but we're pretty reactive to what's coming in. So this would be us proactively planning as opposed to developer X brings in a plan and then we have to figure out a way to put it into a current zone and or through development agreement, kind of create the parameters for it. So you can be proactive and think about this ahead of time and then see what the market response is. I think the best is when you have a creative developer who's willing to work with the city on developing the policy. So it's not like they're trying to shoehorn something in where it doesn't make sense and you sort of have to either accept it or not. You get to work hand in hand with them. And one of the better versions of this that I'd say right now is rainy homes with the Woodfield Farms extension, the south of seventeen hundred between about six hundred east and future Monroe at seven hundred east. They, they want to do cottage courtyards. They want to do a little bit of density along Monroe, which will be an eighty foot corridor. They've held public hearings about it. They've held public meetings about it and it's, it's going to be interesting to see what happens there. Cause I would love to work with them on a creative uh, housing type. And we may through it, do it through zoning that's permissible in other areas. We may need to do it through development agreement or not at all. You know, might just end up as R one eight, similar to next door and just build single family homes.
Does economic development get programmed into these, this planning at all?
Only in our city, really only through housing choice. Like we're, we're looking, North Ogden will never attract a major job center outside of like maybe another grocery store, but we're not going to land a huge hundred thousand square foot building. But we should be thinking about you, you know, we're right on the doorsteps of the BDO, which has a wonderful, like a huge amount of really good jobs. But can any of the people working those jobs, especially entry level jobs, live in North Ogden? The answer is probably no. So we're probably like second or third home buying a community for second or third home buyers. And I would love to, to think that we could provide areas in North Ogden for every type of buyer.
So this planning that we're talking about could, could help that economic development of that.
For sure. At minimum, just in having, in creating housing choice. Yeah. This is interesting. I think in Utah, generally what the, the approach has been, or at least what I've seen for years, is that you maximize the size of the house regardless of the lot size. But in some cases, they're saying that more density doesn't always mean bigger buildings. So in Santa Barbara, California, an average unit size ordinance provides for increased density. We may by state code be allowed to do an average home size ordinance, but generally the state has said local municipalities need to stay out of the design of single family homes. So you would do this by restricting the overall building box of the house through the front yard, side yard, rear yard setbacks and the height. So you would create like a maximum virtual box that could fit in there. And by doing that, restrict the size of the house. And we may, I think, I think that's defensible. I think we could probably do that. But we'd have to see if, if the home builders are willing to come in and build those homes. Like we just don't have a lot of people willing to build fifteen hundred square foot bungalow nineteen forties houses anymore. Number four, I think reduce or eliminate parking minimums really isn't functional in North Ogden. Like we could do some pretty good shared use parking areas for our commercial where you have like five to nine businesses and then, or eight, eight to five businesses in the morning and then five to nine businesses. So you get as the morning people leave, you end up with like nightlife stuff, a restaurant. But otherwise, single family homes, we really need, need the parking areas. We end.
You know, Salt Lake City has done something.
Yeah.
Just recently.
And they have, they have some areas of their city they're forced to because they don't have driveways in large portions of the older cities. So they'll have like A side and B sides of the street for snow plowing. And we've, we think about in North Ogden being a hill. And we've, we think about in North Ogden being a hillside community, snow removal. And John, help me with the doubling. So like the snow amount you get at twenty six hundred doubles at thirty one hundred. And then it doubles again by mountain road and then it doubles one more time at the power line corridor. So this, and this is from our snowplow drivers saying, so if you get three inches down here, you're like a foot everywhere at the cove, right? And so snow plowing and snow removal is a serious consideration for us and off street parking or on street parking is a serious issue for us. And then number five, allow missing middle housing everywhere. I think this is an interesting quote here. Is more than twenty percent of your land area zoned exclusively for single family housing? Then you need to change the boundaries, limiting missing middle housing to deliver it effectively or equitably. Skip the Portland part, but it talks about if you do this, it can help take the pressure off of specific areas. And Commissioner Green, you brought up the fact that the southwest area of North Ogden is now an area that has accepted a lot of multifamily development in a very short amount of time. So we're kind of densifying one location and it's preserving the single family fabric of the rest of the community. But should we be thinking of more, you know, how to dole out density more evenly across our city? And by allowing smaller lots or missing middle housing or rear yard sellable ADU, you know, external ADUs, those would be ways to kind of equitably distribute density across the city without it all ending up in one specific location.
Yeah, okay. And I think it also could be interesting. I mean, I know we can't really move backwards. I know there's a huge push for increased density, but in that area on the south, like it'd be nice to see a couple, maybe isolated pockets of more of a missing middle housing type rather than the apartment mega complexes, just because there are so many of them down there that it's can be concerning for the city in the long run. So anyway, it'd be interesting to see some little pockets, maybe in multiple locations.
And if any of this, I know that this is mine and Ryan's job and not the planning commissioner's job, but if you can think of good ways to help us educate the residents that these ideas are positive. Because what happens is that public hearing notice goes out and residents are mailed within three hundred feet and they come out and say, this doesn't look like the housing type I have. It will change my quality of life. It's scary. It shouldn't be here. And some of the, you know, the comments made in this room tonight are interesting because you're all residents of North Ogden. And if you could help us help the neighbors see that some of these things are beneficial or not scary would be really helpful. We have an upcoming planning article in the newsletter that's required by the end of the month and I'm trying to figure out what to write. So maybe in this.
This is, you have to write a letter.
Well, me or Ryan, but.
I think, you know,
I was asked.
Some of these missing middle types, not all of them, I think that like maybe they're too broad of a definition, but some of these I feel like are more palatable as a resident and thinking of other residents than larger, like apartment complexes, for example. I think that's like the way in to the idea that some of these could be really palatable. And I guess that's the kind of residual question I have is like, how much can we force like high quality builds, if that makes sense? Like we're willing to allow maybe these duplexes or bungalow courts, but they need to have, you know, X, Y, Z, so that they last and, and they don't, they don't depreciate and, and hurt the neighborhood. Cause nobody, nobody wants that. None of us want that.
So that's an interest. So that's a, the double edged sword of smaller units and more density for affordability versus increased materials costs that negates that affordability.
Right.
But right now by state code, we still can regulate materials on multifamily housing. So we only can't do it for single family. And the argument originally was you're costing us a bunch of money because you're making us do rock and brick facades on these homes. We want you to eliminate it. And then builders just still build to high quality standards because people will buy it and or they want it. And so it, it didn't have any effect in my opinion on overall housing affordability.
Cause well, there's been some down in Ogden, there's some interesting multi, like well, middle housing, not giant apartment complexes that are brick exterior are what they at least appear like they'll retain that value. And they've done some interesting projects down there. So anyway, I think that's something that I would be interested in. As a, not a fan of tons of density, but trying to look at some palatable ways for North Ogden.
Second, south and wall is an example of one of those. And that's, it's almost an entirely brick facade, multifamily.
And a historic site.
And it's a, it's a nice product.
Yeah.
Yeah. But I think, yeah, and parking requirements would be huge for these because we just can't have on street parking, you know?
Yeah. It, it's probably not politically correct to say, but I think you're always going to have trouble on the lower quality affordability piece in Ogden or in North Ogden getting it passed. Like I do, I think that as much as I would like to have the affordability issue, you know, be, I, I think the only way to truly get it through in North Ogden is to have smaller spaces and, and enough parking and enough green space around it. Because I don't think, I think you'll have pitchforks come out if it's lower quality materials. And so as a planning commission, I think that we need to be realistic and accept like we've got to, if, if we want to have this in North Ogden city, you know, there's a, there's an argument here. And if people are willing to move into smaller homes that still have high quality things, because things are only going to get more expensive. You know, there'll only be more inflation. You know, if we want these things to be built, if we had some sort of form that they could follow and people are like, yeah, no, we could do that. The builders will build it. You know, and I think people will buy them. I think people will accept the smaller homes of high quality. Cause I just don't, I just think we'll end up, if we do small quality, lower quality materials, like it's just going to be a problem for the people in North Ogden city. We'll just have a battle forever. It's not what people want.
I think you're completely right. And I just wanted to mention, I mean, one thing to think of, as you know, police officers, teachers, there's these careers that are starting to become where they can't buy homes, specifically like in an area like North Ogden. So I'm wondering if like what you're saying, we can, we can look at maybe some of this missing middle in a high quality way. Yes, pricing would still be high. It's not going to be particularly affordable, but there are careers and professions that it would then therefore be maybe affordable for as, as home buyers. So anyway, that's, that's what I would be interested in. And I think more palatable to the citizens of North Ogden.
One thing that they're, the home builders are saying is that the different, the cost difference between hardy board and vinyl is so negligible now because of the quantity of hardy board that gets produced and the lack of vinyl, that it's actually most, most just use hardy board because it's, it's essentially so close that it, and it helps sell that product quicker. So the likelihood of getting that vinyl thing, especially on the single family home is so small that, you know.
There's, the other argument for this is less about affordability and more again about housing choice. But right now, thinking about if you live on the hill in North Ogden, can you move out of your house for a similar, similarly priced, you know, box on the ground, but maybe you give up your large lot, you have somebody maintain your, you know, landscaping, you do something else. So like, could you move into a smaller home, downsize your home and stay in the same neighborhood? And largely you can't, like that, that is a full scale neighborhood change. And so you could have extremely high quality, high priced, I mean, probably some of the most expensive real estate in North Ogden, certainly, but in Weber County, uh, on the Wasatch front as multifamily housing choice available type of housing way up on the hill. And that would be, you know, that's been an idea that hasn't gained a lot of traction, but I think is going to be something you'll see more requests for. And to me, I think that's not a scary thing. It's, it has nothing to do with modern income housing. It has entirely everything to do with the life cycle of somebody and where they live and they can stay with their neighbors and groups and, you know, community members that they serve with their whole entire life and they can move around without having to exit the community or move entire like wholesale neighborhoods. And I think right now we don't, we just don't have a lot of that.
That's a really strong argument. I think that's a great point. Taking care of the yard as you get elderly, a lot of our homes too, on the slope are stair based heavily. So if there was some more missing middle, maybe little bungalows, that's a great point. Yeah. Great.
And it would be less, you know, go ahead, Johnson.
I think you could end up with some really nice properties in doing that. I, in fact, I think the same that your example of fourth south, yeah, maybe we're not going to have a fourth south thing, but if we had a form based code that addressed that, like you could see those things pop up like crazy. You'd have people move back to North Ogden because they want to live in this community for housing like that.
Yep, I, I would agree.
Scott, I have a, a question on form based code.
Yeah.
Years ago, we tried to have form based code here, but what were the reasons why it didn't proceed?
It was a complicated mixed use form based code. And so I think what we've talked about, or what Scott's talked about is a, a housing form based code that says, look, this is as big of a unit as you can build in this with this frontage. And if you want to divide it into three units and make it a McMansion, do it. But the next guy over might turn it into a duplex and the next person might have it be a single family home. And then you end up with a place like the avenues where you have this mix of housing sizes, you know, next to three story walkups that are six, you know, there's six apartments or twelve apartments in them. And I'm not saying we do the twelve apartment thing, but just the idea is that you get this range of sizes that all look similar enough that they meet that box that you establish as we want it to be this tall, this wide. And the, and before that was just so complicated. I'll pick on Brandon because me and him fought about this one a lot. But the, the issue with most modern form based codes is they don't just try and regulate the way it looks outside. They try and regulate what's happening inside. And a true form based code only cares what the building looks like. And then it allows the tenant to create the space. It could be a, a house. It could be a butcher shop. It could be whatever. And that, that was the issue is there was too many things and, and people can't catch the vision. And what we try to recreate with, especially the mixed use form based code is the twenty fifth street or the main street in Logan, right? That it's, it's what was built before there were zoning codes. And it's just everyone, everyone had their seventy five or fifty foot wide thing and they built, they maximized it based on the economies they could do with the brick building back then or whatever. So.
You want to show the two minute impact fee video?
Might as well. I got it. I got it queued up.
Impact fees are a one time charge that the state legislature authorizes local governments to impose. Funds are likely to help, help pay for the cost of infrastructure in new rural communities. It's a way for cities to finance the expansion of public facilities to accommodate growth. State law authorizes the fees only after the city first provides a detailed capital facilities plan. That plan must include an analysis of existing facilities, including the level of service provided and an assessment of future needs due to growth, as well as the anticipated cost to maintain the existing levels of service. Impact fees are intended as a way to maintain the same level and quality of services for residents as the community grows. State law only allows the money collected through the fees to be used on water, sewer and stormwater facilities, roads, parks and facilities for police and firefighters. The money collected through impact fees must be spent within six years. Impact fees are a way to find a balance between existing and future residents in funding the new infrastructure that population growth requires. State law also explains that impact fees are not intended to be used for operational expenses or to pay for capital improvements. They cannot be used to raise the level of service in a public facility. They cannot include overhead or the cost for general operations of existing service. Without impact fees, the services and infrastructure the residents are used to would not be able to keep up with the growing demands in our communities. The full cost of growth caused by new residents would be paid for by the taxes of existing residents. In fairness, new residents who are creating the need for new infrastructure and additional services should give them the impact of the growth they cause. Impact fees are intended to maintain the same level of service for all residents as growth occurs.
Thanks, John. So right now our average impact fee for a single family home is between, well, the average would be about seventeen thousand five hundred or so, but it's about fourteen, five up to twenty five thousand dollars. So think of every home and new home in North Ogden. That doesn't matter if you're building a four hundred and eighty thousand dollar single family home, which we had a few pop up on Montgomery Farms, all the way up to a several million dollar home where your max is going to be around that twenty five, you know, twenty five thousand dollars. And impact fees should be thought of as they're going to pay for the road and sewer and stormwater and culinary water sitting out in front of that. So every, every subdivision that you take on, we should be really, I'm always really cognizant of, that is a check that we are writing to maintain that infrastructure forever. You know, for the next one hundred years at minimum, single family homes seem to live on the ground for about a hundred years before they really redevelop. And even then, you know, we have nineteen twenties houses all over Utah that aren't going anywhere or redeveloping. So it's expensive to somebody when they're building their house. They feel like this impact fee of, it's eighteen thousand dollars. I can't believe I'm writing this check to the city. But then you think about that amortized out over all of the public employees' time and effort and street maintenance forever is miniscule, right? And so residential in, in effect, residential does not pay for itself. It's always a drain on, on the city as a whole and the budget. And what you hope is that the rooftops you've brought in will help pay some property taxes, which in North Ogden pays for our public safety and police department. But then also that those people will spend dollars in your city and attract new businesses to your city based on the total number of rooftops you have and their relative annual incomes. So that our sales tax revenues budget or kind of make our budget whole, right? But impact fees are one of those things that we, we really, we can't waive, we can't reduce. And in fact, we're currently looking at impact fee studies that will increase our impact fees. So this is a good public meeting to say that because the city council will say that again during the budget process. But they need to be raised in reality to pay for the true cost of the improvements that are being made.
I'm surprised they have to be spent in six years.
Yeah, what's that?
Um, it's, it's spent or encumbered. And so what that means is you, you collect the money and you have to have a project that you've got planned. Yeah. The idea being that if you take a thousand dollars from me, you should be putting it in the infrastructure that I'm impacting the need for. Otherwise I'm not impacting the need for it.
Okay. So when they say spent, you could have a ten year project you could use those impact fees for.
Yeah. As long as they're encumbered. And John, I found, if you want to pull up Google Maps, I have an interesting example in Ogden of an Ogden city project. So they've been, their housing authority has been really active in developing housing that fits into neighborhoods, almost identical to what was there in the, you know, thirties, forties and fifties, but are now modern homes being sold at reasonable prices to income capped folks. And the corner of twenty fourth street and Fowler is a good example of about twenty homes that they fit into Fowler. And I had a friend of mine who lived in one of these. It was a great little house until they moved out of town, but this is a spot where you could create a residential form based code that says the box on the ground has to have these setbacks and this height and get something of like, you know, kind of like this through a form based code system. And they did it because it was their own project. So if you go street view right there at the corner of twenty fourth and Fowler, and then just go north up Fowler, you'll see that these are.
So this is the old neighborhood.
There's an old, yep, that direction's the old. And then as you come into this neighborhood, these are all homes that are now, you know, between, I don't know, seven to ten years old, but they fit like almost perfectly into the fabric of Ogden. And in twenty or thirty years, you won't even know that these were that modern home though. The trees will have grown in and it'll look just like any other area.
So if, if these were previous homes that were demolished
Yep.
And they built new ones. Did these have to pay the new impact fee?
Yeah. Yeah. But the city probably did it because the city's housing authority built the house. John, go ahead.
So what, what they would do is if, if they're, let's say there used to be ten homes here and they were able to put in fifteen, then only five homes would pay the impact fee.
Yep.
Yeah. The idea is you pay for the increased burden. So like when the Smiths came down, Ace and Arby's didn't pay an impact fee, but they did for the
Bean Bush.
The Starbucks. Yeah. Because they used their credit from the, the store on the other two, and then they ran out when they hit the Starbucks.
Yeah.
You know, what's interesting about those homes, I, in my role at the university, I, they kind of shared how they financed it, that, that, that was the interesting part.
Yeah.
Cause they couldn't really get independent contractors to do it. So. So they had to seed it, this concept themselves before it got caught, before it caught on a little bit.
And this is a good example, the Scott's point of the form based code, because it's saying you have to have a front porch and you have to have a detached garage because that's how you fit the character of the neighborhood. Not saying that that would be a requirement that we would do if we did something, but you could say you've got to have a front porch, like that could be a requirement. And that helps with that aesthetic feel for the community. Um, because these, I mean, these are very attractive houses.
They've done this like in five or six sections of the city, haven't they?
Yeah, they have. And in some cases it's old homes that they've acquired and torn down or as Ogden city is really aggressive in buying, um, those single family lots that never got built on. So they're, they still exist, you know, you drive around and for a hundred years, there's been an open piece of ground and Ogden will pick it up. And there's reasons why they're open, you know, it's utility reasons or steep slopes or something else, some geologic reason. And Ogden will take on the liability or cities can take on that liability, construct the home and resell it. And we are into for profit business, right? So the city is more about, we want to maintain really good neighborhoods and high quality of life and provide housing. So we, we have a different set of, um, rules that we have to think about when we do that. And I think that that Fowler, as I thought about it, is a really good example of creative housing that fits right into the neighborhood. And we've made it our hour. So thank you very much. And Lauren?
One thing I, I was thinking about, an area that we may end up having some smaller lots that don't meet our current requirements. Like when we do the next phase of widening of Washington and we remove those homes and widen.
Yeah.
We will end up with some odd shaped lots and ones that aren't deep enough and things like that. That may be a good place where we could have this.
And, and the council did mention that in one of their conversations about using that to create some attainable housing, which is in that four or three fifty to four fifty range.
Yeah.
Well, thank you guys for that training. We appreciate that. Um, we'll move on to, um, item number seven, public comments. Do we have any public that wants to comment in person or online?
She wants to.
Okay. Seeing no hands raised or no one approaching, we will move on to remarks from planning commissioners. I did just want to make a quick remark. I meant to make it earlier with the minutes review. But I just wanted to say thank you to, um, whoever's doing that. The conversation last time regarding the Wasatch Front Regional, um, political council vision was very, it wasn't linear. It was a little confusing and the summary on those minutes was just fantastic. So I just wanted to point that out. Well done. Uh, other remarks?
I'll pass that note on.
Yeah, it was just well done. Um, any other?
Yeah, I, I have one remark, you know, thinking about elected officials versus appointed officials and staff, you know? And, and even using that example that just came up of trying to produce some three hundred and fifty to four, four hundred thousand dollar, you know, houses. Like I think that's great. And I know the city council has broad authority, but I would argue that staff and appointed officials may be in a better position to look at the best interests of the city versus elected officials. And so a balance of power there I think is, I think is pretty important, you know? And, and so anyway, that's just my comment. I'm not advocating that the planning commission should have more authority. But I am advocating that the combination of appointed officials and, you know, people who, who don't have, who aren't likely to kowtow to the loudest pitchfork out there. I, I just think there's something to be said for that. So just, just a comment I wanted to make.
Thank you. Okay. We will move on to the report from the community and economic development director.
Just in two weeks, uh, Ryan and I are going down to the Utilia Cities and Towns Conference. And then in May, we have registered ourselves and commissioner, commissioner Gardner for the conference. And we'll get your travel and training done, but those are the two trainings that we will do. Um, I will present from our four planning commission on the sixteenth and we'll likely have our, well, I don't know who's going to run the computer here, but we'll be at the conference. So do we know yet who's maybe Bryce Nelson?
Probably Bryce or Ryan.
So we'll have somebody run the computer and Ryan and I will present remotely, but we have an annexation that has been applied for on Fruitland Drive. And we need planning commission to weigh in on a recommendate, a recommended land use zone to keep them moving forward in their, uh, public process. So we will meet next week and, or in two weeks, we'll try to keep it to only that item since we're presenting remotely and hopefully make it uh, short and simple. Thank you. That's everything I have.
Thank you. Um, remarks from the city manager or attorney?
Nope, nothing to add.
Awesome. Thank you. And we are looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion we adjourn this meeting?
Second.
All in favor?